Mayor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gothel.
Here. So, we have our agenda posted, which lets you know that we are broadcasting via Zoom. The conference ID is 865-0367-5720. Are we, I suppose I can ask now if there's any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have anybody signed up with a raised hand right now.
Then we'll go into our study session on the results of the survey with True North and Tim McClarny.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Gothel and members of the City Council. I'm Samantha Weigle, the City's Communications Manager. Tonight, I'm joined by Dr. Timothy McClarny, President of True North Research, to present the results of our 2020 Community Opinion Survey. In our ongoing efforts to engage the public and be responsive to community interests, the city hired True North to conduct a statistically reliable survey. This is actually the first time the city has conducted such a comprehensive survey in at least the last 15 years, and we did cover quite a bit. It included questions about satisfaction with city services, quality of life, housing and building, recreation, and communication. These surveys are meant to provide both baseline data about how the public thinks we're doing in providing services, as well as gauge sentiment about policy-related topics. The city decided to hire an independent research firm with expertise in crafting and executing these types of surveys. True North and Dr. McClarny were chosen based on the firm's years of experience with California municipalities, their proposed methodology, and their high success rate in predicting ballot measure outcomes. And with that, I'm pleased to introduce Dr. McClarny.
Thanks, Samantha. Give me Mayor, Members of Council, Tim McClarny with True North Research here. We are a firm that, over the last 20 years, has specialized in working with cities and other types of public agencies around the state in using surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. Today, my business partner and I, working as a two-person team, have designed and conducted over 1,000 research studies for public agencies, and more than 300 of those studies were for California cities on these types of community opinion surveys, like what you're seeing here. It's a mix of gauging resident satisfaction with city services and communication, but also usually tapping in and asking some questions about policy and planning for the future. I mentioned that sort of tracker here because, as I go through tonight's presentation, I may make reference to how the results we're seeing in your survey might compare to what we typically see when we do this type of study in other communities. And I just wanted you to have a sense from the experience base from which I'd be speaking. I also welcome questions from Council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. So, before we talk about the actual survey results, it's helpful to take a moment to speak about the methodology or how we went about conducting this study. Survey was conducted in late January, early February of this year, and we chose a random sample of adult residents. Based on a sample, we started out with a comprehensive database of households within San Mateo. We then randomized that list of households. We appended contact information to it and then reached out and conducted a single interview per household. We use what's called a mixed methodology approach. What that means is, back in the day, we used to rely exclusively on telephone interviewing and telephone recruiting for a study, and that worked really well when everybody had landlines and nobody had caller ID. Today, our methodology has evolved to the point where we now use multiple recruiting methods. So, once somebody is selected for the study, we use mail, email, and/or phone, depending on what contact information we have for that individual. We allow them to take the survey online in a password-protected website or by telephone, whichever is their preference. The survey was conducted in English and Spanish languages, and we had set out and actually contracted to do 600 interviews for the city. And we walked back in with over 1,200 interviews, right? No additional cost to the city, but that really strong response rate from the community, Samantha mentioned, is kind of the first time that the city has done this in a comprehensive way. We tend to find that when you reach out to a community and, you know, this is something that you don't do very often with them, we wind up getting a stronger response rate. In this case, it was more than double what we expected. So, that's a good thing, right? Just gives us a lot more data to play with. And because we have this larger sample size, we have a smaller margin of error due to sampling. In this case, that's plus or minus 2.7%. What that means is that we can be 95% confident that the results we'll be talking about tonight are within 2.7% of what we would have found had we spoken with all adult residents in the community. So, next slide, please. Okay, so on to the results. At the outset of the interview, we kind of take a high-level view of the community from a number of different angles. And so, for each of the statements you see there on the left, "quality of life in San Mateo," "San Mateo is a place to shop and dine," et cetera, we simply asked respondents to tell us how they would rate the city on that dimension. And you can see, at the top of the list, right? The overall quality in life in San Mateo, we had 81% of respondents say that rated as either excellent or good, right? "San Mateo is a place to shop and dine" was second at 72%. I will tell you, that's an unusual ranking, right? Usually, when we talk about shopping and dining in a lot of communities, it falls further down the list because they don't see as many opportunities, apparently, for that locally. Here, it comes in as number two in your community. "San Mateo is a place to raise a family," 65%, "excellent and good." And then on down, you see "as a place to work," 58%, "as a place to recreate," 56%, and at the very bottom, "as a place to retire," 30%, saying excellent or good. That question about retirement is also one that tends to come at the bottom of the list for most communities. California is viewed as an expensive place to live, and so I think a lot of individuals see that it's a difficult place to retire if you're on a limited fixed income. Next slide, please. So, after that warm-up question, we asked individuals two open-ended questions. The first of which is, what do they like most about the city of San Mateo that should be preserved in the future? By open-ended, what I mean is, we didn't provide them with the list of responses that you see here and ask them to choose. We just recorded their verbatim responses. We went back and looked at those verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories that you see here. So, at the top of the list, "references to parks and recreation facilities" and "recreation opportunities" was the number-one response. One out of four respondents mentioned something in that category in response to what they liked most about San Mateo. You had about 14% who weren't sure. Here, we see shopping and dining opportunities pop up again at about 14%. Small-town atmosphere, 11%, proximity to surrounding cities areas, 10%. So, this is a good gauge of what's sort of top of mind when people think about the community and what they like about living in San Mateo. Next slide, please. Also, another open-ended question where we asked them, okay, if the city government could change one thing to make San Mateo a better place to live now and in the future, what change would you like to see? Here, again, we didn't provide them with a list of alternatives to choose from. They just gave us their own open-ended sort of verbatim responses. We went back through those responses and grouped them into the categories that you see here. You'll see that if you added up those percentages, they add to more than 100%. That's because sometimes people would hit on multiple issues, and so we were able to code them in multiple categories. But what's striking is that the very top of the list, "provide more affordable housing," had 24%, so almost one out of four respondents mentioned that top of mind without any priming. Then you had "reduced traffic congestion," about 19%, "limited growth, preserving open space," 16%, and then on to references about improving, maintaining infrastructure, roads, improving parking, on down. So, gives you a sense, again, of whereas the last one was top of mind, what do you like most about living in San Mateo? This gives you sort of their top-of-mind answer as to what they'd like to see changed about the city to improve the overall quality of life. Next slide. So, as part of a resident satisfaction survey, one of the most important questions we ask individuals is, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city of San Mateo is doing to provide city services? Because we're asking them to speak about the city's performance overall, right? We're not referencing specific service areas. This can be considered kind of an overall performance rating for the city. And you can see that, overall, we had 73% of respondents say that they were satisfied with the city's overall efforts to provide city services. You had about 18% who were dissatisfied. You had a little less than 10% who were not sure, prefer not to answer the question. That comes up with a satisfied, if you look at the green slices of the pie comparing to the red and orange slices of the pie, you wind up with a ratio of satisfied and dissatisfied of about four to one, right? So, you have four respondents who were satisfied with the city's performance for every, among those who had an opinion, for everyone that was dissatisfied. What is striking is, if you, in the report, we do this. If you break this down, you look at it by various subgroups within the city, it's very consistent, right? So, regardless of how long someone's lived there, whether they have children in the home, right? Age, gender, all of these different demographic characteristics. What we find is that the percentage who said that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide municipal services ranges between 68% and 81% across all those different subgroups. So, it's really consistent across subgroups. Next slide, please. So, that last slide asked them to comment on the city's performance overall in providing municipal services. Here, same basic question, only we've now broken it down into 13 different specific service areas, right? And asked them to tell us how satisfied or dissatisfied they are with each of those. There is a varying percentage sometimes in here, it's usually small, of respondents who aren't sure or couldn't comment. And because we wanted to have sort of an apples-to-apples comparison here, we're dealing just with the respondents who provided an opinion here, either satisfied or dissatisfied. And you can see in the top of the list, "providing fire protection prevention emergency medical services." You had 96% of respondents say that they're satisfied with the city's performance in that area. Maintenance of buildings and facilities like city hall, libraries, parking garages also tested very high, along with providing parks, sports fields, and recreation facilities. As you go down the list, you get to the bottom. You have some service areas that don't test as well, that satisfaction ratings are lower. Managing traffic congestion, addressing homelessness, and maintaining local streets and roads. Those were the three, sort of toward the bottom of the list, for more opportunity areas. Next slide, please. So, next topic we transitioned to after kind of getting residents read on their overall satisfaction with the city and quality of life and talking about specific service areas, we started transitioning into the topic of housing. And we know from that earlier question, when we said, what's the most important thing that, or what could this one thing the city could change to improve the quality of life in San Mateo? We had 25% of respondents, off the top of their head, say, you know, more affordable housing. And so, but that was what was top of mind, right? Not everybody answered that question. And so, here, we wanted to get a read on how people felt about the amount of affordable housing that's currently available in the city's middle-income families, which is that left column or bar, and low-income families, which is on the right. And we simply asked them for each of those categories to tell us if there's currently too much of this, about the right amount, or too little of this type of housing in San Mateo. And you can see that there's a little bit of subtle difference between how people respond to middle-income family, affordable housing or affordable housing for low-income families. But for the most part, they're pretty similar responses. And you have more than 2/3 of respondents in both categories saying that there's just not enough of this, there's not enough affordable housing in the community. You had about a quarter who said that there's about the right amount. And in both cases, you have a pretty small percentage, either 4% or 7%, respectively, that felt like there's too much of this type of housing in the community already. Here, again, it's interesting in the report, if you break this down across a variety of subgroups, what you find is that the view that there's not enough affordable housing in the city of San Mateo is very widespread, even among current homeowners, right? People who already own their home in the city of San Mateo. You find 65% of those individuals think that there's not enough affordable housing in the community, right? So, it's not they're answering not just for their current situation. Obviously, they're thinking more community-minded about that. Next slide, please. So, after that, you know, the city of San Mateo is going to, like a lot of cities in California, the state decides how much additional housing is needed, and they will allocate that, and you are told, not asked, right? To plan for additional housing. And so, city San Mateo, like a lot of the city clients I'm working with now, are expecting that they're going to be told by the state they have to add thousands of new housing units to their community. And so, the surveys are a good opportunity to kind of get a gauge of, given that scenario, how would residents prefer that the city plan for this additional housing? And so, in this particular case, we prefaced it with the statement that the California state law requires that all cities plan for additional housing. And with the general shortage of housing in California, it's expected that the state will require the city of San Mateo to plan for thousands of new housing units. So, with this in mind, would you prefer that these homes be concentrated in fewer developments and located in areas of the city that are close to transit stores and restaurants? Or be spread out throughout the city by having smaller infill projects and allowing for more housing units per parcel within existing residential neighborhoods? So, it's a way of getting a sense from residents, would you prefer, if we're going to have all these, be told to have all these additional units, that we plan to concentrate them and put them close to transit services? Or should we spread them out throughout the community and plan for accommodating that growth within existing neighborhoods and infill projects? So, that was the purpose of the study. And as you can see, or this question, as you can see here, you've got a mixed view in the community, right? But then it leans towards a preference for concentrating these units in larger developments located in areas of the city that are close to transit stores and restaurants, as opposed to spreading them out throughout the city with smaller infill projects. And then you had about 8% of folks who preferred not to answer the question. So, this is the overall preference within the community. The next couple of slides show how it breaks down by subgroup. So, if you can turn to the next slide. Here, we see how the breakout works across length of residence, I mean, how many years they've lived in the city, their level of satisfaction with the city's overall performance in providing municipal services, as well as their current home type, right? And what you see in general is that the preference for concentrating future development as opposed to spreading it out is present in most of the subgroups that we look at here. The one exception is condominium owners, right? They kind of flip the other way. They prefer to see that future growth be spread out across the city rather than concentrated. But every other category tends to lean towards the concentrated side. Next slide. Here, we break it down by whether they're currently homeowners or renters, ethnicity as well as age. We do see that among homeowners, there's kind of a strong preference, 55% to 36% in favor of concentrating versus spreading it out. Renters, it's a little more even, and there's a slight preference there for spreading it out as opposed to concentrating it. But again, it gives you a sense for how this preference sort of breaks out across different subgroups of your community. Next slide, please. So, although the original question kind of gave a description of what we mean by concentrating future growth or we mean by spreading out future growth, in the space of the poll, we wanted to actually dig into that a little deeper, and we tested strategies on both sides of this, right? It's both to get a sense of what the community would find appropriate and what types of strategies they may not support. It was also an opportunity to help them understand a little better what concentrated mean and what spread out means, so that we could circle back to that same question a little later. And so, in this case here, we had four different strategies that were associated with concentrating growth. And we prefaced this by saying, in most areas of the city of San Mateo, buildings are limited to five stories and 50 housing units per acre. To be able to concentrate additional housing in a few areas of the city near transit stores and restaurants may require allowing taller buildings and/or allowing more units per acre. And so, with this in mind, would they support or oppose allowing buildings up to eight stories, keeping existing five-story limits but allowing more units per building, et cetera? These are the four different strategies we tested. And you can see at the top of the list, you had about 2/3 of respondents say that they would support allowing buildings up to eight stories. You had about 57% that were comfortable keeping the five-story limit but allowing more units within those buildings. As you get into the taller building category, buildings up to 12 stories, support drops to about 50%, and then buildings over four, 12 stories, support drops to about 47%. Next slide. Same basic approach to the question, only here, we're asking about strategies for spreading housing out. And that may require more units per parcel in existing residential neighborhoods. And so, we asked about allowing single-family homes to be redeveloped into duplexes. For that, we had 2/3 support, 66%. We also asked about allowing single-family homes to be redeveloped in up to four units per parcel, so a fourplex. You can see that support drops off pretty quickly when you go from duplex to fourplex. We now are sitting at 49% support. And then allowing, a strategy of allowing condos and apartments to be placed in areas that are currently zoned for single-family homes, that strategy had about 41% of respondents say that they would support. Next slide. So, at this point in the poll, they've heard a little more about what a strategy of concentrating future growth looks like, as well as a strategy of spreading it out. And so, we circled back to see to what degree respondents are still landing at the same spot that they were before, right? Now that they've learned a little more about each of these strategies. And what's interesting is, we had about 15% of respondents flip-flop, right? They went from one preference to the other. But the net effect was it was largely offsetting, right? Such that we ticked up about one point overall in those who prefer the concentrating, concentrating growth in these larger developments. And we ticked down one point in spreading that growth out into smaller infill projects. So, the overall pattern remained similar, right? Even after learning more about each one of those strategies. So, switching gears, out of housing into recreation. And we asked, first of all, in the area of recreation, for each of the activities that you see here listed in the slide, we simply asked respondents whether they or another member of their household would be very interested, somewhat interested, or not interested in participating in the activity offered by the city. So, we purposely asked them to think about their own household's interests, right? We didn't want them thinking about what they think other people's households might be interested in, right? Or whether this isn't a question about whether they think this is a worthwhile program for the city. It's specifically targeting whether they and their household have an interest in this particular activity. And you can see at the top of the list, art and cultural enrichment programs had a lot of interest. Same with drop-in gym use, weight rooms, cardio equipment, and adult fitness classes. As you work your way down, you get to the bottom, sort of the learn-to-swing classes, as well as the licensed preschool and after-school childcare. That had less interest overall. But again, keeping in mind, a lot of households may not have a child. That's part, you know, that would be sort of eligible or applicable for preschool. And so, it's natural that those more targeted programs and the teen programs are going to have a little less interest overall because households may not have a teen or a young child. You can flip the page. We also, though, switched over to the facility side. And we opened this question up by saying that the city of San Mateo is updating its parks and recreation plans with the goal of improving parks and recreation facilities in the city. But because the city has limited money, it's going to have to prioritize across which facilities are built or improved. And so, we introduced a little sense of competition here, and we asked them to tell us, you know, for each one of these items, should it be a high, medium, low, or low priority for the city? Or should the city not be spending any money on this item in the future? And we asked them to please keep in mind that not everything can be a high priority. And what you see is, at the top of this list, expanding and improving the network of outdoor trails in the city that had the highest percentage of folks claim, assign either a high or medium priority at 73%, followed by making improvements to Central Park, providing licensed preschool and after-school childcare facilities. So, here's where you see an interesting difference between the last question, which asked, do you have a child in your home? You know, that would require them to have a child in their home that would need that service, right? Here, we're simply asking, should, as a community, should we provide this? And what you're seeing is that a lot of respondents who may not have a preschool-aged child or nevertheless, or a child that's in need of childcare, nevertheless, support the idea of doing this in the community, upgrading children's play areas in existing parks and on down. So, it gives you a sense of how your voters would prioritize among these potential improvements in the city. Next question, please. And then changing gears one more time. We also explored the issue of city resident communication. And we asked them in this question, overall, are they satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's efforts to communicate with residents through newsletters, the internet, social media, and other means? You can see that, overall, you've got about 70% of respondents who said they were satisfied. You had about 19% who were dissatisfied and about 11% who were unsure. I can tell you that I do this a lot for cities and have done this a lot for cities for 20 years. And this is probably the one area that's been the most challenging for cities over time, particularly in the last five, six years. You know, as the ways in which people get their information and the sources they go to have proliferated, right? As much as they had with social media and the internet, it's just become harder for cities to be in all of these places at the same time. And the consequence is that, you know, cities' overall satisfaction with communication has tended to drift down a little bit over time. I mean, you're dealing with a situation that's very fluid, changes a lot. And so, overall, we had 70% who said they were satisfied with the city's efforts in this respect. We did, sorry, if you can change the slide. We did also take an opportunity in the survey to ask individuals how effective they felt various ways the city could communicate with them would be for them personally, right? And you can see here that email, postcards, letters, and newsletters mailed to their home or direct mail, as well as social media like Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor, and the city's website were the four top ways that respondents felt would be most effective for the city to communicate with them. Town hall meetings, advertisements, television programs, less so. Okay, and so, a couple more slides just to wrap up. I go into a lot of detail in the full report in terms of conclusions and what we think these patterns mean, so I'll be brief here. First thing, as part of any of these studies that we're looking at, is to get a sense of, you know, how satisfied are residents with the community as a whole and quality of life, as well as the services and facilities and the performance of the city in meeting their needs as residents? And what you see here is that residents, you know, one of the obvious takeaways is that residents are generally satisfied. They like San Mateo as a place to live, and they also have a high opinion of the city's performance overall. We saw that, you know, they, in addition to prizing the overall quality of life, you got really high ratings for shopping and dining, which is unusual. And you also were rated highly as a place to raise a family. Again, overall, performance in providing municipal services, positive ratings. And, you know, considering that you're swimming upstream a lot with communications these days, I think the city's communication scores are also solid. So, you know, to the extent that you can view this survey as a report card on the city's performance, this is a really solid report card, right? This is the kind of grades that you're hoping for. I would also emphasize that, when you get a good report card when you're doing one of these surveys, it is earned, it is not given. What I mean by that is that if you, as a city, were failing in some way, right? To meet residents' needs, when you go out with a survey like this, they are more than happy to tell you that, right? And so, when you get solid numbers like you have here, it's a reflection of your performance, it's a reflection of good leadership, it's a reflection of staff doing what they're supposed to be doing on a daily basis. It's earned, right? And so, you should be proud of that. Like any customer satisfaction study, it should be not just about how are we doing today, but also where, you know, looking out to the future and looking for opportunities for improvement, right? And as you read across the survey results in a number of the different questions, I've compiled here a list of the opportunity areas, right? That residents pointed out. Providing affordable housing, obviously, that was something that 2/3 plus of your residents felt you need more of in the community, so that was one item. Traffic congestion was rated sort of towards the bottom of the list in terms of overall satisfaction, that's obvious. And then, as you go through these other bullets, at different points in the survey, you see these sort of step out from some other service areas as being areas where, you know, residents see that there's a little more opportunity for improvement. I'll have to turn the slide. And then finally, you know, one of the things that really steps out, as we've talked from the survey results that we talked about, is that affordable housing is sort of top of mind for residents. We had a quarter of them say it's top-rated response when asked what the city could do to improve the quality of life in the community. And we saw that although there's really widespread agreement that there's not enough affordable housing in the city, opinions are somewhat mixed in terms of how the city would best accommodate new housing, right? That said, overall, and in just about every one of the subgroups we talked with, the preference was to concentrate future growth, right? As opposed to spread it out throughout the city. And then those last two bullets there just talk about it. If you're going to concentrate future housing, the preferable, the preferred strategy overall was to allowing buildings up to eight stories in cities in areas of the city that are near transit. We had about 2/3 support for that. And if you were going to instead take the approach of spreading And if you were going to instead take the approach of spreading housing out throughout the city, um, the strategy of allowing single family homes to be redeveloped into duplexes was the most preferred strategy. Every other strategy we tested sort of fell off qu- quickly in terms of support from there. So that is a high level, reasonably fast run through a lot of slides here. Um, I am happy to answer any questions from council, uh, if there are any.
Dr. McClary, thank you so much for that presentation. I appreciate it very much. Um, it's very good to know that there's a lot of positive things out there. I'm going to open it up to the city council. Depending on who has questions, maybe I'll ask one question myself before we get to that. You mentioned there were two questions regarding uh affordable housing, whether we have not enough or too much. Uh, and there were some people who said we have too much affordable housing. That was a small percentage. How how many was that?
Um, I think it was about four percent in one case and six point six percent in the other.
So six point six percent of the people who responded, which is supposed to relate to six point six percent of the city population?
Correct.
So about six thousand or six thousand six hundred people roughly think we have too much affordable housing?
Yeah, I'd have to do the math on that. But yeah, it's a small percentage. And what you tend to find, um, you know, these are individuals just don't want to see that in the community typically, right? It it when we get that answer, it's, you know, they just don't want to see it, right?
And then the question about what people's favorite thing is in the city, you you neglected to mention that I think part of the question was other than the city council. I I saw that. That was part of the question.
What's that? Yeah, yeah. Which is why there is a very limited response there, right?
Council members who have questions? Eric Eric looks like he has a question. Go ahead, Eric. You're still muted, Eric. Sorry.
Thank you. Um, getting back to the affordable housing question, um, you know, it doesn't surprise me one bit that everybody's talking about it and everybody's saying that we need a lot of it. Um, but when I was thinking about like what what to take away, um actionable, uh, what actions that we can take away from that, other than that, we know people want it. Um, I was interesting, I I was interested in how you added the prioritization exercise for the parks and rec and introduce it, introduce a competition in the in the kind of like, well, what do you want more? And in the affordable housing uh area, um, it's, I I think that most people would agree that we need it, that it's how do we pay for it and what what are we willing to give up to get it? Because if we, um, if we talk about increasing taxes, if we talk about decreasing parking requirements, more density, et cetera, then all of a sudden, um, you know, is that all that that support seems to collapse sometimes? And I'm just curious, like, how how would you advise policymakers, um, based on the the results of the survey, everybody's saying it's important, what can we take away of? So how do we get there? I mean, if you ask somebody if they want ice cream, they're going to say yes. But then if you start getting into the the nuances of it and paying for it, then it gets a lot more tricky.
Yeah, it's hard. I mean, it it on the priorities question, um, you know, we we just point out that, look, there's unlimited, it's not an unlimited pot of money, right? And so the city is going to have to make difficult choices. Some of these things can be paid for, some of them cannot. So with that in mind, how do you feel about, right, um, each one of these items and how would you prioritize them? You know, as far as affordable housing goes, I've seen that handled differently in different communities, right? If some really, you know, these are communities that have growth potential, right, will look to that and kind of put it on the developers and have some restrictions on that and say, look, if you're going to build, we're going to demand a certain percentage of these housing units are affordable, right? We have another city right now that is looking at a revenue measure for the November ballot that is all about providing affordable workforce housing, right? That's the entire sort of purpose of the study. And they've are going to put it to the community to see if they're willing to support that or not. Um, you you know, it it is a challenge because on the one hand, we can say we all want more affordable housing. At the same time, we recognize that you as a city also have other, you know, areas that you need to keep up with as well, like public safety and uh, you know, parks and rec and other things. And so, you know, I I think there's more learning to be done here, right, in terms of if you decide this is a strategy that we're going to, we're going to pursue um, or a, you know, something that as a city we can do. I think you need to sit down and think about what your alternatives are and what options you have as a city. And then come back and probably have a follow up conversation with the community a little bit about, all right, how 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 much, how worthwhile is this and where are your priorities now?
Great, thank you. And I had one more question, if I may. You know, I I was really looking forward to the results of these the survey and I knew that um whenever they came out, there were going to be some people um disagreeing with some of the uh the results one way or the other and claiming that the survey was biased in some way or we're leading and things like that. We've already received some emails uh to that effect. I'm just curious, how, what would you say um to those that might have said that, you know, maybe we were leading, the the survey was leading uh, people to say, oh, we um into false choices and and things like that? Could you just talk a little bit about, I know you've done this.
Yeah, so when, you know, when we do these types of surveys, you know, but and we're thinking about a question. I mean, at the end of the day, what we wanted to do, surveyed, it provides some direction back to the city, right? About how, you know, you would accommodate future growth in under the circumstance that the state's going to tell you, not ask you, they're going to tell you to plan for future growth, right? So with that as a backdrop, we said, all right, let's structure a question so that that residents understand that we've got to, we've got to have a workable plan here uh for dealing with this. And here's one option and here's another option. Um, you know, I'm sure, you know, some people say, well, the third option is we don't add housing, right? Well, that's a, that's a, you know, that's an easy answer to give, but it doesn't actually give the city meaningful guidance as to how it is that you're going to plan for future housing when the state tells you you're going to, right? And so, you know, there's a, there's a reason why we structure the question that way and we do, you know, on the premise that the city has to accommodate this future growth. How do we do this? Do we concentrate or do we spread out, right? Um, we we don't get to say pull the escape hatch and I just don't want any growth because that doesn't provide any useful information back to the city under that circumstance, right?
Thank you.
I want to be on record. Um, I like ice cream. Who wanted to go next? Emirates? Oh, Diane, go ahead, Diane.
Oh, just uh actually just a comment. Um, and then also, if I could see slide nineteen again, was that the one that had what's expected in the future?
I think that one is the conclusions slide, key conclusion slide.
Can we see that one again? Okay, I was just curious, uh, providing affordable housing was on there twice. I just couldn't figure that one out.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my mistake.
So you did want it. And were those in any particular order? They were, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I kind of ordered them in the sense that you pull this from a couple of different places. So and that's probably why providing affordable housing pops up here twice. Because it is named as the number one response when we ask people what the city could do to improve the quality of life in the community now in the future, right? And then we also have that question where we ask specifically, you know, how much affordable housing is there for middle and uh low income families, too much, about right, not enough, right? So it pops up as a clear need in both of those cases and and I I should have just limited that to one met reference. But that's kind of why it pops up the top. Managing traffic congestion, that was when we looked at the various services that the city tested in those in that ranking of thirteen different service areas. Managing traffic congestion was at the bottom of that list. We saw a lot of desire for, you know, limited growth, preserving open space on down. So it's kind of picking and choosing from a couple of the questions where we get a sense of of what voters, I'm sorry, what respondents are caring about. And that's how that list gets compiled.
Um, and traffic, okay. And then I just, um, I just want to do, uh, make a statement to the public at home knows, um, or is reminded that the city council had nothing to do with your selection of topics and or questions that were asked, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about um general areas, right, of of interest because and thinking about, you know, what are some of the the, you know, issues that council is going to be wrestling with in the future and as part of a general plan update? And then I went in and I created the questions, right? And um worked with staff to fine tune a few things, but I'm really leading this effort based on the city telling me the basic topic areas that the city is interested in.
And no one from the city council helped you formulate a question?
No, no, sorry. I meant, definitely not council. There was, but I interacted with staff, right?
Okay, thank you.
Emirates, are you ready? You have questions? Councilmember Lee?
Uh, thank you so much. I I had a question, well, a couple of questions. One was about um revisiting the number uh with the thirty percent uh folks, of folks who felt that this was a good place to retire, that meaning the seventy percent that don't. Um, and I, and you said that that's pretty, um, well, that's relatively standard in um in the state. Is that the case? I mean, I just, I was interested like in sort of more drilled down uh relative to even just Bay Area. Um, counterparts, do you, do you still feel like we're aligned in um in our?
I I think there's a real correlation um to how respondents answer this question in relation to what the cost of living is in the community, right? So when you're in a place that has, it's expensive to live, the housing is expensive, you tend to get an answer that this isn't a great place to retire because at the point you go on fixed income, hard to keep up with the cost, right? Um, if you get into some other parts of California that are um, you know, less expensive, right? You can see some of that in the Central Valley and and in some parts of the California. You you get a somewhat better answer to that question, but it's still always at the bottom, right? And um, you know, I think there's just a perception that California is an expensive state to live in overall. Um, and we're, you know, always hearing how, um, you know, I think about what my parents did. They up and moved Idaho, right? And now ironically, they're back. Back in California. Um, but um, yeah, I mean, that was kind of their requirement. Place was less expensive to live. And so I think that's what you see in that question. It isn't that you don't have services for people who are seniors or anything like that. It's more a reflection of the cost.
Okay, thank you. And then um I wanted to ask about the sample size of twelve, um, twelve hundred and seventy six and um and then the drill down sample size for um for the subgroups. And you you had a disclaimer in the report saying that we should caution when generalizing interpreting the results for small subgroups.
Right.
Um, but I think it's interesting, you know, I think when when we're looking at the um certain populations like seniors who have, who have very like specific programmatic um interests that don't necessarily apply to the broader population, uh, how, you know, how do we sort of decipher what um, you know, what interests specific stakeholder groups? Um, and and do you feel like our sample size is sufficient to actually extrapolate um some, you know, some meaning out of the the this, these subgroups and their preferences?
Yeah, one of the beautiful things about having the response rate that we did for this survey, you know, when we, we've gone out to do six hundred overall, right? That's a, you know, that's a great sample size overall. It's going to give you a margin of error of, you know, uh, about four percent, but overall, but the moment you start cracking that sample into subgroups, right? Your margin of error is based on the subgroup sample size. So you very quickly, when you're taking six hundred and parsing it into, say, five different separate subgroups, all of a sudden you're down to a little more than a hundred, even if you had them even in each group. And your margin of error is going to grow real quickly, right? It's not a linear relationship between sample size and margin of error. It's a nonlinear relationship. It sort of takes off as you get below two hundred. Um, twelve hundred and seventy six is a is a very good sample size. Um, it's probably, it's among the largest I've ever had come back for a resident satisfaction survey. And the neat thing about that is you can now, like you mentioned seniors, I did a little quick math. You got about two hundred of them in the sample, right, that are sixty five or over. Well, that's great because what that then allows you to do is to look at that subgroup sample size and you've still got reasonable score reliability with that subgroup, right? And so I always, as you're looking through the data and we have cross tabs, you can look at and see kind of what the number of individuals were within each subgroup category. My my rule of thumb is, look, if you've got more than a hundred there, you can, you can feel pretty good about that result. And obviously, as you go more up than there, you're you're better off. As you start to tick below a hundred and you see a pattern that looks unusual, that's when you have to say, well, how much of that is really a reflection of that group's opinion? Or am I now just drilling down to a small enough subgroup that, you know, the margin of error is so large and I happen to get some outliers, right? Um, but I would feel for purposes of recreation, if you're looking at broad like age group categories, you can do a lot more with this survey with twelve hundred than most would do, be able to do with their community surveys.
That's great news. Good investment here. Uh, uh, my my next question was about um pool utilization. I noticed that the phrasing of pool utilization was um nu- number of visits per month, I believe. And I I'm, I was just a little bit confused because we are only open the pools for two months. So was was that explicit um in the crafting of that question?
So we were trying to get us, I mean, we, we're just trying to get a sense of how often somebody uses these, right, these these facilities? And so the the scale was at least once a week, one to two times per month, one to, once every two or three months, a few times a year, rarely or never, right? You're right, the pool one is a little awkward because you could, someone could go say, well, I I use it every month when it's open, but then I don't use it the rest of the the year kind of thing. And so, I mean, you just want to put an asterisk around how you interpret that question because we're asking them, you know, sort of generalize for a year how often they use it. And so they're having a kind of factor that in when they reply.
Yeah, I mean, that's where that question and the crafting that question and then the feedback about recreation to see, because I was, you know, I I was a Parks and Rec commissioner before and we did the uh the facilities master planning process or strategic planning process and um and aquatics was, you know, at the top of of the 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 preference. And so it was interesting, you know, to see um how that kind of uh fell fell down the ranking with, and I don't know if that's just sort of the phrasing of the question there. Um, and oh, my last question was um was about the communication strategies. And I was wondering, um, because I noticed that uh phone, phone and text was not on the um the list of options. Were were those options provided? Um, and or were they generated by the the community members themselves?
No, so we provided those options. Um, uh, we didn't test text. We haven't worked with a lot of communities that have kind of had a robust texting potential, right? And so that tends not to be one that we ask about. Um, and then the other one was you you mentioned, I'm sorry.
Phone?
Phone. Those, when we have asked about phone, what it means, it tends to be sort of pre-recorded messages, right? So automated phone calls, they tend to be not very popular, right? Um, we don't, we're not trying to say that, you know, hey, if a resident has an issue and they'd like to communicate with staff or staff needs to reach a resident, that phone isn't an option or phone isn't a preferred option. It's just that when we, that's sort of a given. What we, what we're asking about here is more sort of mass communications, not one on ones, right? And the automated phone calls again tend not to be very popular.
I wonder if that will, that will change in COVID or um, and also, I mean, with so many of the younger generations doing text.
Text is, I mean, text is different. If you had a group, the ability, you know, to do group texting, right? As a, or mass texting uh would work. What we didn't test here either, and we've tested in some other communities, is an app, right, for like a city app. Those actually tend to be pretty popular, right? Um, but they need to have good features, right? Because some of them are really plain. Um, it's it's more like to picture a pothole, send it in, that's about the limits of the communication. Um, I think the ones that have a little more uh robust communications, two way communication capabilities and push messages are are ones that residents tend to find a little more attractive.
Interesting. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
So Rick, I saw you raise your hand. Um, I couldn't tell if you were raising your hand because you're a senior who retired here and you're happy about it or if you had a question?
Uh, both, because I actually raised my hand on the little uh program too. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, I, I am a senior who's lived here since I retired in twenty eleven. And I, uh, for me, the idea of moving away, uh, just because I retired wasn't really something. I mean, I've been working here and living here and enjoying the quality of life here for so many years. And my economics are okay. I can afford to stay here. And so here I am, and I'm still working on improving the quality of life. I think it's a great place and we have a lot to build on. Um, uh, but I was wondering, because you, you broke it down a little bit by, um. By numbers and the seniors, you said, were about twen- two hundred, two hundred, uh, people out of the twelve hundred, which is about sixteen percent of the pool.
Correct.
Um, but when it came to the question of, you, you know, is this a good place to retire? The full group of twelve hundred were responding.
Correct.
Okay, so, so those are different responses from different people.
Right. Um, and I, I'm trying to see if offhand I have that answer among seniors. I may not have it offhand, but I can get it.
Um, okay. I'm just making the, the statement though, that I think that in general, it, we know people approve. There's a great quality of life. I agree with them, right? And, um, uh, but it all has to do with economics, I think. And you've said that, so I'm, I'm really not arguing with you. Um, one other thing though. The, uh, choice of questions and the way that people could respond. And you had that choice there, prefer not to answer on quite a few. And then on a couple, I saw you had not sure along with prefer not to answer. But in many cases, early on in the questionnaire, it seemed that there was no kind of a neutral choice, like, eh, I don't know. Um.
Yeah, because what we, when you think about measuring attitudes and, and, you know, we do a lot of thinking on this. Is, you know, what's the best way to capture an attitude? And so you think about things like importance, right? Importance is only a positive scale. There's no such thing as negative importance, right? It goes from a zero point off to the right in a positive direction. Satisfaction can go both ways, right? But as they come together, they hit a point, right? And it's this little fine point where you could argue, wow, I'm not satisfied, I'm not dissatisfied. What we tend to find is that, that's really more like, I'm not sure or I have no opinion, right? I've thought about that enough to have an opinion. And so, or, you know, in some cases, I know that some of the housing related questions, some, you know, the, the prefer not to answering group. That was in large part people who were, they didn't like the scenario, right? They didn't like having to say, well, push comes to shove, how do we accommodate growth? They wanted to just say, I don't want, I don't want any of those answers. I want it to, I want something else, right? I'm going to jump in on for not to answer because we, you know, we purposely were asking people to choose between these two alternatives. Um, so in some cases, we don't do a not sure and a prefer not to answer because we feel like, you know. The, the not sure is going to invite people, um, as almost like an escape hatch, right? And they're going to take it, right? Instead of sort of wrestling with the question and coming up with an opinion on it, they'll, they'll, they'll jump to that.
An easy way out.
And so that's why we didn't answer, we didn't offer that on that one. We, you, you could still choose prefer not to answer, but we're, you know, we want to say what. You know, if you, if you had to lean one way or the other, which way are you going to lean?
Yeah, okay. And what that means is they prefer not to answer as it was presented. And with those choices of responses.
Yeah, or, or it could be someone who says, I really don't know, and so I'm going to jump. Right?
Um, and if they don't know, that means it's probably never been a problem for them. Or, or they're not experiencing the good aspect of it either, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have had, we always offer something in there, right? We will always offer prefer not to answer on a, on a online survey. I'm not going to force somebody to, to pick a, pick one of the two alternatives. They always have something, somewhere to go, right?
Yeah.
But what we find sometimes is if you, if you offer up, you know, something that seems like an easy out. And a respondent hasn't thought about it too much, they'll take, right, without thinking too much. And we don't want that either. We want them to kind of wrestle with the concept.
Okay, good. Well, you know, I, I thought about another question you might have been able to ask along with. Um, the question about the homeless is, you know, uh, uh, one phenomenon that we know that we have here is overcrowding. You might think of that for the future.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
That's, that's a good point, Rick. It's just sort of emerging people's understanding of those words of overcrowding and density. And the difference between the two and.
Exactly.
It's a good distinction. Um. I had a scary thought a moment ago, thinking when millennials are on city councils and entire council meetings just happen by text. Not, I'm not ready for that. Um, are there any other?
Snapchat.
Any other questions from the council? Anything at all? Nothing. Um, great presentation. Thank you mu- so much, Dr. McClarny.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else for us to do on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
For the record, there are, uh, no hands raised for public comment.
Excellent. Thank you very much for chiming in. And so I will close the public comment period. And just say thank you, everyone. Thank you, Samantha, for coordinating.
Yeah, if I may, I, 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 I'm, I think I'll concur with all of you that I, I'm very grateful to have this information. So often the public thinks that you're just pushing information to them. And this has been a really great vehicle for us, uh, to have information pushed to us. And, um, I, I'm hopeful that it, it will be very useful for us. I, I have no doubt that it will. So I, I thank you, uh, good doctor for your, for your time.
I concur. I have a better understanding of what the, the public thinks out there as a result of this survey. Thank you. Eric?
And I just, while we have time, I just wanted to say, um, kudos to go out to Samantha. And Drew and his whole staff for the, the very high communication marks, um, that we got in that survey. Because those are very hard to do in this app, in this day and age. And so, uh, I think that's, at, at the very least, that's an A plus on that part of the report card for, for your team. So thank you.
Big time.
And one more thing, I knew I ended up living in the right city when food and restaurants were such a big priority. I could really relate. Sorry.
And, and just for the public's benefit, um, the survey results will be available on the website.
Excellent.
And Dr. McClarny is also conducting our hotel survey. And so he will be back in about a month to present those results to you as well.
Great. We'll see you then.
Great.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody. Uh, we'll be back, uh, at the seven o'clock meeting in about thirty minutes.